Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Kate McCannie Herald on January 4th, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start the work session with Administration of Finance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will turn it over to Jill for departmental reports.
Okay, first up, we have the engineer's report.
Okay, thank you. On the capital project front, we had a bid opening on July 11th for the 82nd Street Tennis Court Building, and unfortunately, the submitted low bid exceeded our budget and estimate. Based on our forensic and conversation with some local contractors, we are recommending that the bids be rejected and re-advertised for bidding with a bid opening later in the month. It's our understanding that we may get better pricing being later on in August due to scheduling, and I believe you have a resolution on the second part of your meeting to effectuate that recommendation. In regards to the 94th Street and 114th Street Bulkhead Replacement Project, we have received a review letter from the DEP last Friday, and we are currently responding to their technical comments. Last item for capital projects, our office continues to work on developing the bid documents for the 2018 Utility and Road Program, which now includes improvements to 88th and 108th Streets, and those were items that were talked about here in front of council a couple meetings ago. Lastly, in regard to grant opportunities, the NJDOT has announced that they are accepting applications for roadway, pedestrian, and bikeway applications. Those grant applications are due by October 8th. These are the typical customary annual roadway grants that the borough has done well in the past, so I'll be working with Jill and Grant to make a recommendation to council to file that application. That would come before you in the form of a resolution, and then we would submit the application by October 8th. That is my report. The other thing I would like to inform Mayor and councils, unfortunately, I will not be here for the second part of the meeting today, so if you have any questions relative to the bulkhead ordinance that is scheduled for, I guess, adoption at the second part of the meeting, I am here now.
I have a question about your initial report.
Okay.
Just educate me on this, because we're talking about the 2018 Road Program.
Correct.
But the bid specs are going to be developed in the spring of 2019? I'm just trying to get this time thing, like if it's a 2018 Road Program, but we're not doing it until 2019?
No, the bid documents will be completed so that we would go out to bid this fall. Construction would start probably this fall or later in the year, continue through the spring of 19 with a possible high end in the summer. So, yeah, we'll be out to bid this year.
The construction will start this year, hopefully, hopefully, in the fall. Okay.
Definitely out to bid, though.
Okay, and the bulkhead, I do have a question about the, just so in my mind, I understand that we're all together on this, that we have a $5,000 threshold there where the engineer can waive some of the stipulations of the permits and materials and whatnot. Now, how is this going to work? I mean, if somebody wants to make a repair and they get an estimate that it's $500, do they have to still, they still have, the way it's written, I think, they still have to come and get a permit?
Says here, says the borough engineer may relax or waive any or all requirements that are set forth within the application for a permit pertains to reconstruction less than $5,000. So typically, the way I've seen this, when I was a municipal engineer in middle township, they would come in with an estimate.
Okay.
From a contractor, of course, we would check it to make sure that the bill didn't say $200 and they were replacing a thousand feet of bulkheads, so there has to be some reasonableness to this. But part of the case that they would make, I would hope, would be here as an estimate to prove that they're less than $5,000.
Right, so your understanding is, as I read it, then they do have to come to the borough and say, hey, we're going to do this, and this is what I think it's going to cost.
Right, and I believe the sample form we created, there's a box to check for a waiver.
Okay, all right. So these decisions can't be made on their own out there, that, you know, this is less than that, therefore, we're just going to go ahead and do it?
There'll be as much as possible oversight on that.
Okay.
And on the Road Program, so we added that 88th and the Bay?
Eighty.
Where the street ends at the Bay, where we had a couple of residents come?
Yes.
Okay, that's what we added.
That was added, as well as 108th Street resurfacing.
108th and Third? 108th and Third?
108th.
Between Second and Third.
Between Second and Third, okay.
Just resurfacing, there isn't any infrastructure involved with that, just new block.
Okay.
Going back to the bulkhead ordinance, we had had some, I'd heard some concern from property owners, actually supposedly contractors, that the ordinance as written would create flood hazards where the, it would be trapping the water on the property for rainwater, and I did talk to Mark about that, and if he could kind of explain a little bit of how the ordinance is actually written.
Okay, so I didn't know the exact nature of the complaint, or what the concern would be, but you also have a grading ordinance that you're doing kind of in tandem with this. So I don't know what specifically the issue would be, but if you're building a new bulkhead and you're building a new property, you're going to grade it properly, so.
So that shouldn't happen?
Yeah, the bulkhead.
Can you also, you would explain to me about that the waterproofing is really, doesn't go all the way down with the sheet?
Yeah, I know we talked about this a couple times, so just to kind of re-clarify, the waterproofing aspect is not intended, and it doesn't say, to go from the bottom of the bulkhead all the way up to the top. It would be for areas where, let's say, a property owner chose not to backfill up against the bulkhead all the way, and again, this is probably a ludicrous example, but there's three foot high of bulkhead. Well, in theory, the ground, you can count as waterproofed, and you're going to have three foot of exposure that's not watertight. So if you chose to do that, we would ask that you would caulk the joints to try to make them watertight, which is a simple process. I don't foresee that happening in new construction, because I don't think that would look right. Probably would affect, I was telling Jill, would probably affect us more, so, because we have street ends that are like that. So when we go to replace a street end, where you're standing on the sidewalk and the bulkhead's about waist-high, we're going to have to do things to keep it waterproof, which we would, though. But just by virtue of the fact that you would raise a bulkhead up to elevation eight, I couldn't see how you would be trapping or ponding water unless you improperly grade your property.
You're not, you're not going to trap any more water than you're already trapping with existing bulkheads, so it's not, you know.
It's not going to add to it.
It's not an argument, I don't think.
And there's drainage below grade. These bulkheads afford drainage below grade back to the bay.
Yeah, some designs have holes in the bottom that allow.
I mean, I've never, I've never installed one that hasn't had that below grade, so, and again, you're only talking about the instance where the water level rises above that and the bulkhead is exposed. The way I foresee this going forward is that these lots along the Bay, and of course, Mark points out aptly so, the street ends are where this is going to crop up, and that's really our territory, but these are going to be, these lots are going to be backfilled and graded towards the street, especially with the new grading ordinance, and there'll be retaining walls installed along the side sections of the property, so that you have that whole back area against the, against the bulkhead is backfilled, probably close to or near to elevation eight.
Plus, you also have requirements now for splash pads, and I believe you're talking about pools and things of that nature that get closer to the bulkhead, so I couldn't imagine that, you know, you're going to have three or four foot of freeboard behind the bulkhead that you would have to caulk it, but we were just trying to think outside the box, maybe help you with your CRS points, just to waterproof whatever exposure is there, because if you don't backfill it, you're technically getting the full value of your elevation eight.
And I just wanted Mark to address that, in case someone comes at the regular meeting, because he won't be here, so. That's all I have.
Jill, did we, did you notify those two individuals from 88th Street that spoke a few meetings ago about the condition of their street? Have you notified them that it's on the list and it's going to be?
No.
Should we? Is that?
I can.
Yeah, we can.
Let them know.
Yep.
Okay, if there's nothing else for engineering, tax collector?
Hello, everyone. So, did everyone get their tax bills?
Yes.
They were mailed on the 26th. We extended the grace period to August 20th. There's a resolution in for that tonight. Tax sale is officially scheduled for September 12th. I mailed out 13 notices. Seven will be advertised beginning next Wednesday for four consecutive weeks, and then the tax sale will be on September 12th. My office is extremely busy right now. It's crazy. Phone calls are coming in very heavy, fast and heavy. It's exhilarating, actually. I do enjoy my job, and it's busy, and I'm actually happy to be here, because it's given me a small reprieve. So between the reassessment, the appeals, the direct debits, and the prepayments, we're getting all kinds of phone calls. Because the water bill says direct debit, but their tax bill didn't, everybody is calling me and/or sending me checks for their direct debit, so we're having a lot of fun with that. The appeals, we always get the calls with the appeals, because people, they look at, the residents look at the top of their bill where their assessment is, and that assessment doesn't change until next year's January tax roll, so they get confused and they don't look at the credits on their bills, so they always call up and say, my bill's wrong, and so that's fun, too. And the prepayments, the people who were paying their August and November guesstimated amounts don't have any credit left because their assessment went up, so we're getting calls on that, too. It's a very challenging, interesting tax quarter this year, and we're handling it. As far as the utility bills go, we're working on that, and our goal is to get those bills out this Friday, so we're, as I said, we're really busy down there. Does anybody have any questions about their tax bills, or an appeal if you had one, or anything?
Deb, with your history in the tax collections, when you advertise the ones that are delinquent, they always catch up before the actual?
I rarely have a sale.
Exactly.
I rarely have a sale.
Right after.
We have one lien. We have one outside lien and one municipal lien, and so we're a very solvent town. I'm very fortunate to be your tax collector, so. Anybody else have anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tax assessor?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, our tax appeals are done at the county level. The total loss in ratables was $10,532,300. Of those, 30 were settled by stipulation, which was agreed upon by me and the board. We lost $4,694,000 in ratables. There were 30 stipulated. We had 17 tax board judgments, which was a reduction of $5,838,300. Now, I probably should have settled them all, because the average loss on a stipulation was $156,500 compared to the tax board judgment, which the average loss was $353,400. And I think that next year, we're going to see more appeals because the assessments increased by sometimes 20%, 30%, because I couldn't get the improvement values to where they needed to be on the new construction. So anything newer saw a pretty big increase. We have six tax court appeals left. They're all residential, and I'm going to try my hardest to settle them for the least amount of loss. So added assessments go out August, I'm sorry, October the 1st, so I'm hoping that we can make up lots of revenue on all the big, brand-new, spanking, beautiful homes that we have here in Stone Harbor. That's my report for today. Any questions?
Doesn't appear to be any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Okay, next, construction and zoning.
Good afternoon. How is everybody?
Very well, thank you.
Okay, as well as everybody saw this morning, Reed's is on their way, which was nice to see what they had to do today. It was a good thing. Regatta Bay is in plan review still right now. There's still some issues with electric that they had to attend to as far as the plans were concerned. Pretty much, everybody else has signed off on the permit to get that going over top of Nemo's. We will hopefully see that kick about a week or two, somewhere around there. We're still getting a lot of calls about the times that the contractors are starting. It hasn't filtered out, and the word's out, but they're still pushing the envelope a little bit, and we're in a process of trying to reach out to all the contractors. It's still a daily process with that.
What do you do when you get a call?
Call the general contractor.
You don't go on the job site or anything?
Well, mainly because if they're starting before the time that they're supposed to start, we're not, we're not here unless Ray's here earlier to witness it. So I really can't do much other than try to get them, you know, in line with what the ordinance is, and it's, I think it's probably, they're always going to push the envelope anyway because of certain aspects of construction, which is normally what you see. If they're trying to get the place watertight, sometimes they're on the roof trying to get it done after, you know, 6 o'clock or after 5 o'clock when they're supposed to.
So you're getting the complaints after the fact, the next day, when you come into work?
Correct.
Okay.
It's before and after our construction times. So we just do what we can with the guys as far as phone calls, and I'll go to the sites and talk to the contractors that are on the site also.
Are you advising the complainants they can contact the police at the time of the violation? Okay.
Yes, and I just did that a couple times this morning, too. I said, you have to, one woman said it was like 7:15. I said, you have to call the police station and at least get them on board with it and see if they can get out. We've had, we got about 30 new construction, new homes still under construction right now that are active, so it's still booming, still kicking pretty good. The, about maybe five, what do we got here? About five new June starts compared to, what was that, last year, June, it was only one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, I guess, and what we were talking about before was it had something to do with the ordinance as far as pilings and demolitions, so they got on board. They got on board real quick so they could get them rolling through the summer, so.
Mike, you don't know what it was the year prior, or like an average over a couple years, and if you don't have that, could you provide that? Because that was, I think, part of the original discussion that I brought up. I said, what this is going to do is it's actually going to foster or encourage people to draw plans and get putting in foundation in and pull these permits. So now, what we're trying to avoid is, you know, the most, the most, I guess, intrusive portion of the job being, you know, cutting a masonry block and framing during the peak season.
Safe to say, it's been, it's been less than what it is right now.
I'm just saying, so from 2017, 2018, that's a 500% increase. I'm curious if one is an anomaly or five is an anomaly. What's it been over, you know, a period of, let's say, five years? If we can get those figures, if you have them, which is great, because that's going to be telling, I think. So if it was 1, 0, 2, 1, then we know there was an average of like 1, and then all of a sudden, 2017, we see five new houses crop up. That's, in my mind, significant, so.
It's easy to pull up on Roadrunner, our program.
Okay.
But I, honestly, it's so unpredictable, anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's all over the map.
Because you'd have to consider the number of permits pulled, too, for the year.
Yeah. It's still busy, still very busy, and we, his transfers have, are still coming in like crazy, too, for sales.
Roger and I have six transfers tomorrow, some of which, one of them's right there on 9803 Third Avenue, which is, and about the previous month, there have been several inquiries from design professionals about that property. What can we do with this? It's a commercial downstairs to residential, and that's one that I guess someone's going to, someone's pulling the trigger to purchase, and with the different various design professionals that have called me, I wait to see what comes across the desk for that one. Last night, zoning board, they approved two minor resolutions, one of which was the Vale, Julie Vale's property on the same street, just a couple doors down, to remove the shed roof on the back and put a second floor deck, but the view opens up in doing that. It's going to open up the view of the Bay for the neighborhood properties such as this one. And as Mike had said, with the Regatta Bay and the Yacht Club, the Yacht Club, I'm waiting on the engineer's approval. That had to go back to the engineer. Part of the resolution says approval for all the engineer comments when they came before the board, so we're waiting on that, the CAFRA and the Board of Health approvals, that are pre-approvals to zoning, but we are running it through the construction office simultaneously to get all our comments at the same time, so when everything does fall in place, we're ready to pull the trigger and say, here's your permit. So that's moving ahead.
Years before, we would always wait to get all those prior approvals in before we started, because that would always slow them up, anyway. So it would be, you know, let's get all that intact first before we run it through the construction department.
Now, we're doing things, same with Regatta Bay, doing them simultaneously, so that it does move ahead a little faster for the contractors. The Regatta Bay, when Mike said I'm waiting on, I just got the original electrical, but when they submitted all the plans, there was no electric in there. So we just got it, I said, you know, we need electric, so. So I got them, so now that's why that's being delayed, the review, and as soon as I get, I told the contractor this morning, or John Caligres, I said, as soon as I finish Yacht Club, you're very next on the list to get yours off my desk. They're very, both plans are, they're intricate plans for both of those projects, they require attention to detail. What else do we have? The planning board will be looking at the grading ordinance that Mark had referred to and we were talking about. Our planning board solicitor has tweaked the comments from the last planning board, and so the planning board will be reviewing that, revised for this Monday, so hopefully you will be seeing that before council shortly after that for the grading plans. And I guess that's about it for today for us, and any questions or anything?
By and large, in your opinion, trying not, trying to be politically correct here, the condition of the job sites in town, is there any improvement over what it was prior to the enactment of the ordinances we did last year?
There always has been. There's more, I think these guys have their sign issue taken care of, where they're identified better. The job sites, I've gone down in Avalon, just not that I need to do that, but gone through an adjacent town when I was doing other inspections for Avalon with our shared services, and there's a huge difference between the two towns as far as the way the, you know, it looks here.
So the ordinance had some positive effect?
Yes, they're doing, I think they're doing a lot better job with maintaining the properties, the job sites themselves.
I think complaints are way down, too. We're experiencing a few complaints, but last year it was overwhelming.
Yeah.
Complaints are way, way down for.
Excellent, that's good to hear.
The hardest, one of the hardest things to do because of the construction process is the concrete sidewalks, trying to get them to do that and expedite that, mainly because they keep having to drive trucks over top of it, and they don't want to break that concrete up. And it's, you know, there's a lot more give, a lot more leeway with that because of knowing that they have to have deliveries driven across that, and it's not an easy thing to do. They could have it craned over top of it, but I think most of these guys have it literally backed up and dropped off, and they drive over top for concrete or anything else, but trying to get them to at least maintain the public right of way has been easier. It's been better.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I'm going to head down.
Okay, next up, CFO?
I just have a couple things. I reviewed the 2018 departmental budgets. Everybody is, there's no unusual spending. Everybody's exactly where you'd expect them to be. And I reviewed the revenues, and there's two seasonal revenues that I thought would be interesting, and that's, one is beach tag sales, and this time, well, through 731 versus 731 of last year, we are within $3,000 of revenues from last year, which is less than a half a percent. But more interestingly is beach tag, or is parking meter revenues. We were up 31, almost 32,000 from last year, or 15%, and most of that, or all of that is kiosks, and has to do with 96th Street appears. That's it.
Borough clerk?
Cash report for this month, beginning balance in the current account, $1,708,286.18, and the disbursements this month was $1,111,855.55. In the Water and Sewer Department, cash balance, $2,407,389.90, and the disbursements were $574,922.20. The Borough Clerk's Office for this month, total taken in, $31,378.40, and in the construction office, total fees, $41,079.
Any planning board report?
Only, well, I guess, I'll take the opportunity to bring everybody up to date on the last discussion we had. I think it was the last council meeting where we talked about the parking meters and that whole issue. So that got out, that we were discussing that here, and as a result, the chamber contacted me and asked if I would attend the, if, I thought it would be attending the regular monthly meeting. They did not want to do that. They wanted to call on their general membership rather than have a meeting with their board of directors. So a meeting is scheduled for this Thursday to discuss that, the discussion that we started here. And in addition to that, one of the things that I failed to convey is the fact that parking is being discussed in detail along with the master plan review. And part of that is, can, part of the master plan review, and Paul Katz is here, and he can clarify anything that, or speak to it maybe himself as to it is, he's reviewing every ordinance. Parking is part of the master plan, and it is being looked at monthly through the planning board. Not through the planning board, but through the master plan subcommittee review. So, some of the things that are being done today are what? I just thought it would be kind of good to fill everybody in what the subcommittee has discussed.
Yeah, in our initial brainstorming, in our discussions regarding parking, we looked at a lot of the existing ordinances, which there is many, timeframes for many areas throughout the town which aren't currently being enforced, just because the meters typically handle that. But then in the off-season, that's almost entirely overlooked because it hadn't been a problem until recently. So a lot of our discussion is centered around enforcement, either through the police department or perhaps adding personnel to handle enforcement to better promote turnover, keep employees from parking all day long in vital areas. And then we've also been brainstorming larger ideas such as a valet service or a shuttle to take people to and from the lesser-used lots in the evenings, like the beach lot and the 93rd Street lot. And then we've also discussed maybe even better signage or wayfinding, just so that people are aware of the lots that are around town that often go underused. So we've kind of looked at it through all aspects, and we'll have a recommendation with the master plan.
Well, one of the things that continually comes up is an inconsistency on what is the. Well, one of the things that continually comes up is an inconsistency on what is the regulations in the parking lots. So are you looking at all of the parking ordinances? Is that what's being reviewed?
We have reviewed all of the ordinance and there actually is a conflicting ordinance. There is one that allows overnight parking in some of the lots. And then another one that says that you are not permitted to park overnight in some of the lots. So that's one of the things we hope to clear up as well as either refining or, you know, further enforcement of the existing timeframes.
Okay. And then part of it is also going to include conversations with the police chief, correct?
Yes. As part of the master plan process, we hope to sit down with him, or plan to sit down with him and go over some of his public safety concerns, parking concerns, traffic concerns. So all of them will be part of that conversation.
Because suddenly it occurred to me, we talk about parking and creating a committee. And I thought, well, we actually have one that Josie is a part of, Charles, Jill is not there. Paul, who else is on the subcommittee?
Bill Cathcart.
Bill Cathcart, Angelo Caracciola. Um, we have to re, and we do have to add a new person from the planning board because Mia Donnell has left. She was there.
Yes.
So I just wanted to assure everybody that parking in general is be, is can, is being looked at and has been being looked at for several months. And I will convey that to these merchants on Thursday. And in addition, they were sent a survey, the survey monkey from the chamber. So that information can be given to the planning board's subcommittee and can be used as, you know, some kind of a survey of part of the stakeholders, so to speak. So it can be information that, that can then be given to the master plan review committee as well.
On top of that, I was just gonna say, on top of that, we're nearing the point where the master plan is gonna be put forward to the public at large and they're gonna be asked to comment. So I think, you know, not only the chamber, which will weigh in via the survey and via, vis a vis our meeting coming up tomorrow, or Thursday, but the public at large will be able to weigh in as well too. So I think, I think we have it covered.
Did Chippewa send a survey? I haven't seen it. I keep hearing they sent it. I didn't see it.
Yeah, they did send.
I, okay. I have not seen it. Okay.
And in addition, internally, um, the clerk, myself, Public Works and the police will be meeting and going over the ordinances also. And based on what our recommendations are, we can forward that to the planning committee.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if it would behoove you or not, Paul, to have, um, Grant from Public Works be on that committee? Because it involves all the kiosks, it involves all the parking.
We'll be doing that.
It involves a lot.
That's one of the reasons I formed the internal committee.
The internal thing that you had spoken about, but I think they're, you should have contact with him.
Yeah, he's on my list of people to.
To sit down with.
Sit down with.
Okay.
But, uh, the plan, the goal of the master plan is once, we want to have a framework in place and not just go to these key personnel with a blank slate because, you know, we want to have some direction, which is what we're working on now, is getting the framework in the direction and then we, you know, promotes a better conversation.
Exactly. Thank you.
It's just that what I'm getting, if anybody wants to weigh in, what I'm getting is negative feedback on the idea of continuing the meters. Is anybody seeing? What are you getting? You getting negative as well?
All negative.
Mentor, are you getting? Yeah, I'm getting negative. Are you getting negative?
Nobody's talking to me.
Nobody's talking to Josie.
I don't repeat rumors. I don't repeat things that I hear.
No, people walk up to me and say, I do not support this.
Yeah, they're not rumors.
Yeah, they're kind of freaking out, some people actually.
Well, I think it's overreaction because I don't think that, with all due respect with the, uh, surveys that went out, I don't think they know the understanding or the depth behind it to just throw out those questions and not know the history or not notice what has been changing.
I thought the accompanying, um, explanation on that email was good. That in the April general meeting, it was a huge topic and it has been. So council's now actually looking at this. It's time to weigh in. So I was happy they gave at least a little, there was a brief history as to why now it's kind of culminating into the discussion that is, has culminated into.
I didn't, I didn't see what you're talking about.
Okay.
Actually, it was in November that it started being talked about.
Right, right.
So it's only taken.
And that's what we're saying. In the April meeting, that it was continuing from the past. And it was like, well, at what point do we actually become, do we react to the, does council react to the information and the complaints? So they were kind of saying, you continually complain about this. So.
Don't you feel, I feel, that a lot of the onus in off-season parking goes back to the merchant with their employees? And say, you may not park on Ninety-Sixth Street, or you may not park in the business districts. There's enough lots and other parking places. And if I see you there, I'm gonna ask you to move your car. As an employer, you can do that. And it takes, I mean, we, why should we have to put so many rules and laws on the books when it can be handled right at the.
They just police themselves, so to speak.
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
I think that's been the, the topic all along with, we've had that top, that conversation, that the employer should take some responsibility and say, you can't park there. We have a free lot on Second Avenue. Walk two blocks. So I do think it begins there before anything else.
I think it's gonna take some thinking really out of the box because I've been thinking about this ever since. And I, I, I just keep coming back to the same thing. We have too many cars and not enough parking places. And we can rearrange the checkers all you want on the board, we're still gonna have too many cars and not enough parking places.
I don't think in the off-season.
Well, no, no, no. I'm talking about, I mean.
You're talking summer? Oh, you're talking high season. Okay.
Parking issue, you know? And, and as far as the, 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 the employee issue, I mean, is it so far-fetched to take one of our lots and say, this is the employee parking lot, period? You work in town, you park in here.
Well, they're already doing that, Ninety-Fourth Street. It caught on. And the, the free lot, there are mostly, there are a lot of, um, employees now. Will actually work at the Green Cuisine and walk all the way there, put their car and walk all the way back.
Right, right.
Brain surgery.
Right. But it's such a huge difference between the problem we're facing in-season versus off-season. Off-season seems to be a somewhat easy fix, but we've got to get some more cooperation. Just know what your employees drive and go look.
Yeah, that's easy. Yeah.
But the, all, the in-season, that's a tougher issue to grapple with. But one of the evening, I mean, one of the things that is quite frustrating is in the evening, there really is plenty of free parking two blocks away.
Just people don't want to walk that far.
People don't want to walk. And there is plenty.
That lot is usually always empty.
You don't have to drive around anywhere. You can go there. And it is literally maybe five cars in both lots. So underutilized. So maybe signage, push it out there through marketing, just get that word out that it is there. But anyway, I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on what is happening overall with this meter thing, with the parking within the master plan. And Paul is at your disposal if you have any questions.
I was the one that was misunderstood. I know we discussed it in the master plan, but I did not think that it was, I'm gonna say this respectfully, his job to sit and draw the ordinances or to, or for us to sit and start to chop out the responsibilities. I did not, I thought.
Yeah, parking is planning.
Yeah, we're developing the recommendation the ordinance will follow.
Okay. I didn't.
The framework, so to speak. But parking is planning because first you gotta really, we gotta see what kind of problem we have and why and where is it? Somebody's got to identify all of that and that gets identified and then the plan.
And I think just as important is to codify and put all of the parking issues in one spot and decide whether we really do have three-hour limits, which the signs say we have three.
They say we do. That's in the ordinance.
It's right there on Second Avenue.
Right.
Three limit, three-hour limits, but we really don't. Because you can now put money in your meter from wherever you're sitting and you can park another three hours. Now you can park another three hours. So we don't have three-hour parking.
We have the three-hour limit on the books, but we're doing, we're making it easy for people to violate that.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to say.
We're facilitating the violations.
Right, right.
Probably not a good idea.
But that's not something that the planning board would, I mean, the master plan would, I mean.
How do you fix that? Would you be, is that under planning? Would you say, well, part of your problem is you're violating your own ordinances?
Well, if the solution is to enforce those ordinances, we can make that recommendation.
Then you'd have to change the kiosk.
Right.
Right.
Which don't.
Right. But by the same token, the issues that we're seeing, perhaps the answer lies more in the off-season of the three hours.
Cause you can just.
And just clarify in the off-season that it's three-hour parking.
Well, that might be the solution in off-season is to do that.
Right.
So that they do keep moving. And with all due respect, because I understand what you're saying too, is your employees, well, it's, it's okay if you have four employees to keep track of. But when somebody has thirty and forty employees and try to figure out where they're parking, eee, I think that's hard.
This is another reason that Public Works has to include it. If you're even considering thinking more kiosks or extending.
No.
We don't have the employee.
We're not thinking that.
To cover that at all.
Yeah, not, no, that's not on the radar.
Public Works anyway.
No, that's not on the radar.
One of us are. Yes, we are.
No, I meant enforcement is not Public Works.
Not enforcement, but.
So in order to answer Josie's question though, you do look at all of that as an element of planning?
Yes, we're looking at that as a whole.
Okay.
So we're gonna, we're, the, the revised planning, uh,
revised master plan, we're supposed to, if, I think, we're supposed to approve this by the end of two thousand nineteen? Is that? No. Sorry, that sounded abrupt. June of two thousand nineteen.
June of two thousand nineteen. So the parking issue that the, the subcommittee's working on, i- it's just a sub-part of the overall master plan.
There's still other things that have to be done as far as reaching out to stakeholders in all kinds of ways, even recreation, everything. There's still things. Summertime, like everything else, it slows down. People were unavailable and stuff like that. A couple of the meetings didn't come off.
Because the, if we, you know, um, June, you know, it, the, the, the parking recommendations, which the ordinance, you know, will, would be based on, um, would have to, we, I would think we want to try to get that in effect before next summer.
And we're, we're currently, we're currently on track to have the master plan ready by the end of this year. So we're well ahead of schedule. And if, because there's other things that, in that master plan, not just the parking, that would be beneficial to, to have in place prior to next year. And that's why we did start early on the process. And we're still on track to have it done early.
Good work.
So then we're gonna, after the, the chamber meeting and their questionnaires and their comments, then this body's gonna decide what to do, if anything, in the off-season.
By October first.
Right.
Because we either change the resolution October first or, you know, we just, we don't continue it. It's just October first. What is in place is in place. We decide whether or not we change that. That's the, that's be, be the definitive move we make at that part, at that point. Other things, you know, as far as parking in general during season, off-season, so on and so forth, they'll be looking at. And these guys will be looking at.
And I'm gonna just say this again. If you enforce the three-hour parking, you won't have a problem in the winter time.
And so when this is all fleshed out, that could be what it ends up being. Right, right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then we meet on Monday as our next planning board meeting. And that does it.
That's it.
Plan for funding, you?
Yes. Uh, we have a report for discussion tonight, um, at the request of A and F because we've been working toward, uh, getting things onto a ten-year plan. And not to have, um, such big events such as our dredging and have to wait so long to do dredging, to do maintenance dredging, uh, not knowing what our beach, uh, replenishment, uh, process is going to be because of the site that we cannot use at this point. Uh, so we want to plan ahead. And, uh, at the direction of the A and F committee, Jill has prepared this, um, report where we would add a, um, tax that would be separate. It would be part of the tax, but there would be a separate account set up just for, uh, beach and bay maintenance and so forth. So she has all the numbers. And have you given them out already?
Yeah, everyone should have one.
Alright, so I'll turn it over to Jill who has the, has done such a good job with this. And thank you.
Okay, um, it has, as Karen mentioned, uh, this is a continuation of our, um, ten-year plan. Um, it's also something that Chippewa has been pushing for the, the borough to do also. They felt that this was something very important. They've mentioned it in detail in their last, I say, three, um, general meetings that they've had. So they're very passionate about this. Um, and this is a draft. It's, it's a breathing document. Obviously, there's a lot of other variables as you prepare your budget each year that may affect this. But, um, we wanted to come up with some type of base. I started out showing what we actually appropriated in twenty eighteen. Twenty nineteen, we've projected a small increase only because we are on schedule to do the permanent financing towards the end of this year for all of our other large projects that we've done, including our dredging, um, and the emergency beach replenishment we had to do. So that increase will kick in in debt service in twenty nineteen. So I did not want to do any larger increase there because we already know that you may be looking at having to have an increase just for that. So in twenty twenty, we've projected to, um, have a one-cent increase. And again, this is, it's unofficially dedicated tax. But we figure if we're putting in, it in print each year when A and F is going through the budget, you know that this is your guide. You want to go, you want to go with this. But we would appropriate the certain, certain amount of money. And it's, it will say specifically for the beach and the bay. So you cannot just go ahead and transfer that into like a road program or if, if Public Works needed a piece of equipment. It's dedicated for that. And again, this is in addition to all of your other, your road programs, everything else that you normally have. So this is, this is hefty. But it is something, like I said, that if you want to get away from bonding for these types of things, this is the process that you have to go through. So then, like I said, um, a one-cent increase would be dedicated in twenty twenty. Then again, in twenty twenty-two, you would have another one-cent increase. That would be bringing up your annual appropriations to, um, almost six hundred thousand. And then again, in twenty twenty-four, another one-cent increase, which would bring your, um, annual contribution to around eight hundred and fifty-five thousand. And then we've projected that all the way out to twenty twenty-eight. And as you can see, you'll have in each one of those funds, a little over six million dollars. Now, obviously through the years, you may have some, you may determine that it's time to do a dredging project or we need, a storm came up and we're not getting any federal funding or our, our appropriation contribution towards that is, is significant. Then you would tap into, into this, the reserve that you've set up. Now, I've, we've put in an estimated increase in your assessed value over that time, one percent each year. Um, Jim and I look back over the last several years to see it. One percent is, is conservative. I think you're, we're, we're safe. We're not overestimating it. The other thing, like I said, that, that if, the suggestion would be that if you have to do a replenishment and you utilize that money and you drop below six million, then you want to try to get yourself, within a four-year, four or five-year period, you want to try to replenish to try to stay right around that six million. It's a, it's a comfortable number, especially on, on the dredging, knowing how much we spent for that. Depending, you know, if you have to do several lagoon areas at a time based on that almost twelve million that it costs us to do everything. We felt that it was, it was a safe reserve. Um, like I said, it's very aggressive. Obviously, it's just a draft. Um, you guys can look at it, tweak it, make suggestions. But it's something, moving forward, in A and F, we'll continue that discussion. But we wanted to get that first base out there and start the discussion with everybody. I have sent it, um, to representatives of Chippewa that are very interested to get their feedback, to tell me whether they think that I'm being more aggressive than they even thought we needed to be or not as aggressive. I just wanted to get a feel from them, um, where they, where they felt we should be going with that. Any questions?
So let's go to the dedicated fund. So if this is in a dedicated fund, there are, no one can take any money out of that for another project, correct?
Correct. The only way that you could do that would be council would actually have to do an ordinance to reappropriate the funding. Yeah.
But it could be used for any kind of maintenance along the way, the crossover, stuff like that, some, given whatever's going on in that particular summer.
And you would want, you would want to use it for that. Because we do every year have, Public Works always has to do some type of repairs and enhancements. So this can be used for that. And then. So this can be used for that, and then it can also be used for the big replenishments.
It would take the burden off of the general fund.
Correct. And this, 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 this plan goes with the philosophy that last couple of years where we've also been trying to fully fund some of our other capital projects. Ideally, within the next 10 years, if you can get to the point where you're not actually bonding for any of this, that's golden.
Because the nature of our town is one that unfortunately we will always be facing beach replenishment and dredging. If we have this savings, we're going to be able to do all the other things that have been sacrificed because of beach replenishment and dredging. Road maintenance, all those beautiful things that have gone by the wayside because of the big necessities. And if we can address that here with this plan or a plan similar to it, I think that the people who have issues with what's going on in beautifying our town will see that we'll be able to do so if we have this kind of fund set up.
Correct. And you're laying out so people can see, they know when to expect an increase. You know, they know, say, in 2022, okay, I'm going to get a, you know, one-cent increase on top of whatever, but it's dedicated to these things. And both of these are important. These, these things are what keep your town safe.
And it's 1% on the assessed value?
The, what I did is I calculated the one cent based on increase in your assessed value by 1% each year. So that, so if you notice, the dollar amounts from, say, 2020 to 2021 stayed the same. But then increasing it to 2022, I had to project out what the assessed value would be. If I were to leave it the current assessed value, the amount that you would actually collect would have been less.
Is that the norm, 1% that the assessed value goes up?
Fair, yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, it's, it's an average.
It's an average?
Yeah. Yeah. So those figures will, when you get to 2022 with a one-cent increase, it may not equal that amount because it will be based on what your assessed value is. We've projected what we think it could closely be. If it's more, even better. Any questions, suggestions that you want us to go back and? You don't have to give, you can, you can think about it.
It's a start, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good start.
Great.
I, I think there's always the proponents of, who feel that you should just borrow money. And they have an argument to make, but I think this approach is something that, whose time has come due to the recurrent nature of this. But I think it would be nice, before we go forward, if we could also try to match it. Not match, we'll never match it, but at least have some offsetting, cost-cutting to go along with it. And now I'll incur the wrath of all the department heads, but particularly in new vehicles and new equipment. So going forward, before we're making these rather expensive procurements, that we make sure that, yes, this piece of equipment is a piece of junk and is no longer serviceable. And we think we should have to move off this timeline where, you know, okay, it's eight years old, it's time to get a new one. That's not, you know, does it still work? Does it still do its job? Is it a safety issue if we don't get a new one? And if the answer to all those things is no, then we don't buy a new one. I mean, at least then we can show to the taxpayers, we're trying to do our part in holding down some of the costs here.
Well, I think what you're talking about is the general fund, and we're, we're talking about setting up a separate.
I know that, but to the taxpayer, it's all the same. You're asking them for more money.
If, we are, but they also, at the same time, realize that the beach and the bay are primary, our primary expenditure and our primary, the reason people come here. And if we don't maintain it and with less and less input from the federal government and possibly the state, we never know how it's going to be.
No, I totally agree. I totally agree with what you're saying. All I'm saying is that, you know, when you're asking the taxpayer to fork up another dollar, he's not, he doesn't really care what it's, well, he does care what it's being used for. But if we can show that we're also trying to rein in some costs, you know. We just did the new police building. We're going to do the bathrooms, which, 96th Street, which are good. We're looking at a new beach patrol building. We're looking at a tennis building. And all these things are good. The road, road projects, bulkheads, it's all, it's all good stuff. But, you know, it's just kind of like a good faith, you know, we're going to, we're going to look at this. I mean, we spend an awful lot of money on vehicles. We, we really do. Year in and year out, you know, so. I think it behooves us. And you and I've talked about it before, and I think, you know, in this coming budget year, we got to take a long, hard look.
You're right.
Before we say, okay, we're going to get a new trash truck.
You had a pick-up.
Or a police car, or, well, he's got a red shirt on, you know.
But we've, in defense of Public Works, we've been very cognizant of what we purchase and when we purchase it. I mean, we just don't say, oh, this, and Grant knows because I'm always on him, along with Jill. You just don't go out and buy a new vehicle, just because you want a pretty new.
No.
You know what I mean? So we do look, we do look at that. I under, Ray, I understand what you're saying. We do look at that. But I don't want you to think that we're, we're not looking at it. We, we do. And maybe we have to look at it a little closer.
Maybe we need to look a little, a little harder.
Sure.
Maybe I should have picked the fire department instead of Public Works.
I think, I think Ray, Ray has a point. I think the fact that this money will now, now be coming out of the general fund, we shouldn't look at that as a windfall to the general fund. We need to, you know, and, and look at that as an opportunity to do things just because we have this extra money.
Exactly.
I think, it all comes down to responsible spending. And regardless of whether we're doing this or not, we need to be responsible in how we spend our money. And I agree, if the answer is to note all those questions, you know, maybe you make it last another year or two. I agree.
And that, and that will, that is part of the, the process. When we sit down with the departments and they have to fill out their, their requests, there are questions that you as committee and myself, when we meet with them, we're going to ask them that, and they have to put it in right. And they got to tell us, like, the maintenance, how much maintenance are they doing on that vehicle to justify why they can't last one more year, or how much downtime. I mean, they're all things that we should be asking them. And moving forward, we will.
Anything else on this, from anybody? Proposal, more questions? Anything else from A and F?
That's it, we're done.
Okay, moving on. Public Works.
Mr. Grant.
Just a couple of comments. The beach parking lot is free after 5 o'clock. So if you need something to send to the merchants to guide them to another area to park, it's free. And Public Works does do our diligence when it comes to our budgets. I've been asked year after year after year to cut my budget, and I do whatever I can to keep my vehicles on the road. Trash trucks are not an option. Okay. Get to my. You all read your report from July, I hope?
Yes, we did. Grant?
I am having some issues when it comes to getting our, our well, our water reports back because of the, the gentleman that takes care of that for us now doesn't get the reports back from DEP or the labs in time. So that's why our, our water numbers are delayed if they're not on the report. Just a few highlights. Beach maintenance. Access pass to the ADA crossovers and ADA mats are cleaned three times a week. New street IDs were put on the, on the beach side of every street. Yes, a couple of them were wrong, like 111th Street, and that will be corrected. That was not our fault. We sent, we sent that out and had them manufactured, and they came back wrong. The guys just put them up as fast as they could, and I don't think they reviewed them when they put them up.
Is there any ones other than that?
Well, we got a photograph of 101st. What was the comment? That it might, is this upside down or backwards? Because it didn't say, 100 and 101st. It just said 101st.
Oh, yeah, it's a just 101st.
All those signs are up. So now we have, on the top end of the, of the dune crest, there's a, there's a number that tells you which street you're on. There's one on the, the bulkhead side of the, of the street end. And there's also now one on the beach side. So it's going to be hard to get lost on the beach now, I would hope. Let's see. 105th Street Bay End Outfall Damage has been repaired at a cost of $27,000. This was damage that was done unbeknownst to us at Public Works. It was found after the fact. We're discussing on how we can rectify the situation that we have with contractors tying up to our bulkheads and damaging our outfalls and not reporting it to us. So we're talking about how we can.
So you're talking about rewriting an ordinance or crafting a new ordinance, some sort of enforcement fine mechanism, something?
Yes, we don't have an ordinance that bans anybody from.
From tying up?
Tying up, yeah. We have a, we have an ordinance banning anybody from 25 feet from the guardrail or the bulkhead because of public safety issues on our, on our bay ends. But not, and our beach ends as well, but not for tying up, so.
It's a relatively easy fix, isn't it? Yeah.
So you can't do it.
We're hoping. That was a big hit on us, on our budget. Buildings Department continues to, in their summer mode with all the special events. Last three days, we've had, four days, so we've had different events. The Arts and Crafts Show, which then rolled into last night's event with the Go Green, which rolls into tonight's event with the, with the National Night Out. So they're very busy outside of maintaining the buildings. Grounds Department's been watering the urns and the baskets and, and everything, every day, seven days a week. Some of our shade trees along the business district were trimmed down off the buildings after the last storm we had. A lot of them are starting to sag because of the excess growth. So they took care of that early morning. Today, they actually planted some new azaleas in the nodes to try to spruce that up because a lot of the roses we had in there were infested with aphids and a few other spider mites and whatnot and destroyed them. So we replaced them this morning, actually. Also, we had a lot of damage on, on the islands, and a lot of tree trimming was done last week, and debris was removed. Let me make sure I get this right. We're having complaints about the flower baskets that wrap the posts at the nodes in the 300 block because of the fact that the light fixtures are within two feet of, of the crosswalk. And we put the flower baskets high, and the growth that was coming down was blocking the view. We took them down to a lower level, and now we're still getting complaints about those. So we need to review that when it comes to whether or not we're going to allow them to be put up next year. They are a safety hazard. You cannot see small children coming through that intersection or there's, across, there's crosswalks at the nodes, even though you have the lights flashing, which I don't think are adequate enough. You may want to talk to the county about upgrading them, but you cannot see small children. Before it was, you couldn't see anybody coming through. Now it's still an issue. And we are getting complaints about it at Public Works. Solid Waste Crew is, is working diligently, twice a week pickups. Our numbers for our summer seasonal employees are dwindling. We're going to have to look into researching other avenues of getting employment because we cannot keep these guys here. They come to work, they work for a week, they show up every other day, or there's reasons why they're not here. I won't discuss, but we just can't keep them here. We're down to a skeleton crew right now, and we need to decide what we're going to do about bringing good help in that's going to stay the whole season. Let's see. Water and Sewer Crew, routine inspections are completed every day. Water sampling for the DEPs are taken care of on a weekly basis. Outfall inspections are done. Rocky has actually done an excellent job of, of photographing and, and IDing all the, the outfall pipes along the bay. And actually, we're going to go out again tomorrow and do some, some other inspections, which will be available if anybody wants to know the conditions of, of any of the outfalls. So we are keeping up on that. I know that Ray was very concerned about that, so we are working diligently with that. I know we got a couple of complaints at around the 80th Street well. That well was down because it needed some emergency repairs. We had it videotaped. We had the 75 horsepower turbine pump removed and refurbished. And during the videotaping, we found that the, the, there's a screen at the very bottom of the well at 819 feet. It starts to 854 feet. There's actually a giant screen that sucks the water in from the aquifer. And that had a lot of scale built up on it. So that was repaired. It was rehabbed and is back in service. That's about it. Any questions?
Thank you, Grant. Anything for Grant? Beaches look good at 5 o'clock without trash removal.
Sand's too soft.
The sand's too soft.
We get a lot of complaints. It's because of the fact we're not getting the rain, and we're grooming the beach every single day, and, and the sand is very soft.
Looks good, though. Thank you. Utilities, anything?
We don't have anything. We're set to meet on August 22nd, a couple of weeks from now. The only question I had is, Grant, did we get that camera? Which, that's the only thing I really wanted to hear, whether we received that, how it's working, what?
We do have it. It's in-house. We, we are waiting till the end of the season, the summer season, so we can actually. We have a trailer on order to put it in, to put all of our camera systems, all of our gas monitors are going to go into that one trailer. It's going to replace the trailer that we moved over to 92nd Street well. It's actually sitting behind the well. The camera system has to be set up. The monitors have to be set up. Our guys have to be trained on it. And then, yes, it will go into service from there.
Do you anticipate, I think you discussed this before, kind of mapping our whole network?
Yes.
Starting this fall, probably, after training takes place?
Well, we do have our, we have, we do have our GIS maps that have everything in place, but the conditions is what we're going to map.
Gotcha.
So we know what's going on underneath.
And those GISs aren't always perfect, are they?
No, they're not. No, they're not. And I'm working, trying to try to rectify that. As well as the valve exerciser that, that we're working on a bid for that. And we're going to bring it, bring it forward to you for a resolution so we can get that in-house at the same time. So we can do what DEP wants. They want all our valves exercised, GIS system, so that when they come in and say, let me see your mapping, let me see the conditions, let me see the, the maintenance you've done. Where's your records? We have them in place.
I think that's.
So yes, cameras.
I forget exactly what it cost, but I think it was $90,000. I think it's invaluable.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, it'll be cost-efficient for us to do that. That way, we can decide whether we need to do this street or we need to do that street, or, you know.
Yeah, it's on the shelf.
We can create a, we can create a map on future renovations.
Anything else? Anybody have anything else?
Yes, I would like to just make a comment. Go Green had their fourth annual fair last night. And Kim Stevenson, don't hate me, but thank you so much for all you do. We had, what, about 16 vendors? Eight, 17? 18? I was going to say 18 first, and I thought I was overstating. We have many who come back every year. And this year, there was an estimate of about 200 people that we had. I think it was one of the best we've done. We put it into the family night, and we had a good showing.
And you think you'll stick with that plan? That's the best way moving forward on a Monday night with family night?
I think, yeah, that worked out really well. I think everybody was happy with it, and we really didn't lose any vendors coming in the middle of August. I think they were more supportive, because if you do it after season, it's harder to draw the people. And this way, you have that draw, you're right in the middle of town, and it, it, it was nice. It was a nice affair. So thank you for all your hard work, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, well, very quickly.
You're good, you got time.
After the last, the last meeting we had, we talked about the bike lanes. And, and Mr. Schweickert, who happens to be here after the meeting, requested that, you know, if we do decide to do anything with those bike lanes, as far as labeling them, bike lane only, or whatever we decide going forward, that it be opened up to the, or at least the public be notified that we're going to do this, so we can solicit public comment. Because I guess there are a lot of people out there with feelings about how bike lanes.
Should be operated.
Should run, okay? So I assure him that we would, we would, we wouldn't do anything rash.
Nothing rash, Mr. Schweickert. Never.
Do you want to present that to Chippewa, or not really?
I don't know what the plan, like, I don't.
For their comments, or?
Some kind of a survey. We could ask them to do it, I mean, it's easy enough to do, but it has to be pointed questions, or what is it?
Chippewa actually created a bike safety pamphlet.
A couple of years ago.
Two years ago, I think.
Yeah.
Based on their concerns, so we could certainly ask again, or we can look at what.
Aren't there rules concerning bike lanes, though? I mean, and we.
Probably what's recognized as a bike lane has to operate as such, and probably the only thing you can do.
I would say under DOT regulations.
I'd have to say it, I don't know.
If you're, yeah, if you're classifying as a bike lane, I think you have certain regulations to follow.
It's a problem if we don't, and especially, we got funding for that, did no, did we not?
DOT funding.
Initially.
So we can look at that when we look at it all?
Yeah, when we put it in.
Okay.
Quick, quick question. I should probably know the answer. Is there a speed limit in the bike lane? No, I'm serious.
Probably 25.
There's bikers that come through town faster than 25.
It's got to be 25, right? You can't exceed 25, just a.
I mean, they come, they come through early in the morning, they're going, they're clipping along at 30.
Yeah, because it would, I would manage, it's going to.
I'm just saying.
The speed limit on the roadway is for all motor vehicles.
You open your door.
Or all vehicles, not motor vehicles, but all vehicles, and there are vehicles, so 25. They're limited to 25.
They are?
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah? Yes.
Do you clock any of them on radar, 125? Don't have one? I'm just saying, they're, you know, they're crouched down, and.
This is, yeah, go ahead, keep going.
They're moving, and you're opening your car door.
Oh, yeah.
And you don't see them, it's.
Somehow bikers have lost the ability to realize that they are under the same protocol as driving a car. They have the same rules of the road that we do, and yet, but they think they're a pedestrian, or they're above the law. And I don't know how you change that.
Again, I think, I think there's, it's like anything.
Start writing tickets.
Some that are great, and then there's some that violate, you know, egregiously, so. It's like anything.
Anything else on the bike lanes?
Not on the bike lanes, but someone did ask me, I didn't know who it was. What is the speed limit on 96th Street from the beach to the bridge?
25.
Well, I, that's what, that was my answer. Do we ever see anybody going too fast on 96th Street that they could get up to 25 miles an hour?
Oh, yeah, you do.
Well, the reason they asked me that, because when I said 25, I tried to imagine 25. In the middle of winter, I can imagine it, but in the summertime, I can't. Because what they said to me was, why don't you reduce that? Because technically, you shouldn't be doing 25, the same that you're doing on all the other streets on at least this street. And I'm just sharing it, because I, I don't know who the person was, I just listened to them. But it's not a crazy idea, but if we really do have people going 25, good luck, you know.
I don't think you can get it up to 25 in.
Coming off the bridge.
Yeah, well, coming into town, I could see it, but, you know, we have, yeah, I'm sure you get them that way. It was just a, just a moment in time that, you made me think of it, Charles, as far as rules and guidelines. But if we give people speeding tickets for going 25 on 96th Street, yikes, so.
Any other comments? Never know what anybody's bound to say at this point. With that, then, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We're adjourned. We're back at 4:32.